Hello, everybody. Thank you for joining us. We are here tonight for the regular meeting of the Dripping Springs ISD Board of Trustees on this Monday, December 13th, 2021. The time is 6:03 PM. We're getting started with a quorum of the board. We do have Marissa Guralhava who will be joining us shortly, but Joanna Day and Shannon O'Connor cannot be with us tonight. We're going to start with our opening ceremony with pledges of allegiance to the American flag and the Texas flag, and that'll be followed by a moment of silence if you'll remain standing afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
You may see them. Okay, we will now have our announcements. Dr. Morris Coons?
Well, good evening, everyone. Want to give a couple of quick recognitions for our students. Our speech and debate seniors Eli Craddock and Daniel Hearn were named Academic All-Americans by the National Speech and Debate Association last week. And our Dripping Springs High School band had 37 students named to the TMEA Region 18 Band, with 15 of those students advancing to the area auditions in January. 26 students from Dripping Springs Middle School and Sycamore Springs Middle School were also named to the All-Region Band. Our high school cheer team has qualified to compete at the National High School Cheerleading Championship at Walt Disney World in February. We have numerous holiday programs that are going on right now by our fine arts groups, including choir, orchestra, dance, and even a production of The Nutcracker at Sycamore Springs Elementary School. So some amazing things happening in our schools. And so just some quick calendar updates. Our next Long Range Planning Facility Committee meeting will be this Thursday, December 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the Dripping Springs High School cafeteria. Friday is an early release day for all of our DSISD students. Elementary students are being released at noon, and secondary students will be released at 1:15. Buses will run at those times for our regular bus riders. And then our schools and district offices will be closed for the winter break from December 20th through the 31st. Our staff and teachers return on Monday, January 3rd, and then our students will be back on Wednesday, January 5th. And then if I could just also announce that this evening, we are really excited to have here many of our retirees and to have a moment to recognize them. So thank them for being here and their families. We're excited to have y'all being a part of our evening. So excited that afterwards, we're actually going to pause our meeting, invite you all into the lobby, and we have a cake where we'd like to just spend a few minutes honoring you. So thank you all for being here.
My name is Tiffany Duncan, and I have the privilege of walking through and working tonight to honor the amazing folks that we have here who have dedicated their lives not only to public education, but also to our district. And so we have 11 staff members who we are honoring that are retiring from Dripping Springs ISD this evening. Several of them are unable to be here with us. So if you are able to come, please come down for your plaque whenever you see your name up on the screen. We're going to start this evening by honoring Ms. Donna Andrews, who I believe was not able to make it this evening. But Donna Andrews was a Special Education Teaching Assistant with us at Dripping Springs for 21 years, which is true dedication and commitment. She has a passion for kids and came to work every day and made a difference in their education. She was helpful, kind, compassionate, and hardworking. We could always depend on Donna to be on her A-game every day. We wish her the absolute best in her retirement, and we will welcome her back to be a guest teacher anytime she wants to come see her DSE family. She is missed and will be missed. Donna was at Dripping Springs ISD for 21 years with us, and her total years in public education were dedicated to the community of Dripping Springs.[393.16][393.16](APPLAUSE). Next, this evening, we're going to honor Sonia Bianco from SSMS. She was not able to join us this evening either, unless she was here at the last minute. Okay, so Ms. Bianco had an incredible knack for creating a warm environment in the Center for Learning and Innovation, otherwise known as our CLNI. Her creativity and coming up with seasonal decorations was second to none. She was a key factor in making the CLNI an environment where middle school kids wanted to hang out. While she could be serious, she also had a great sense of humor, and she exhibited amazing technology skills and made the CLNI a welcome place for the geek squad. Her heart was always in the right place, and she always kept the needs of her students as priority. The SSMS family already misses her, and we wish her the best in her retirement. If you didn't notice, we asked for the campus, who knew everyone best, to submit their feelings and how the employees represented the district. And so Ms. Bianco was with us at Dripping Springs ISD for four years and has spent 20 years in public education.[465.47][465.47](APPLAUSE). Next, it's my honor to invite Jane Canales to come up front. She served at Dripping Springs High School for 36 years in various capacities. She implemented a French program where she taught levels one through four. She also started the Dripping Springs High School's first theater production program, teaching all levels. She's taught pre-AP English III. Administration always counted on Jane's cheerfulness, her team mentality, her commitment, and have often asked her to take on extra responsibilities, such as working as dyslexia designee, teaching pals, and sponsoring cheer. As of the last few years, Jane headed up the English Language Learner Program as the coordinator at the high school, teaching ESOL I and II and running LPAC meetings. When Jane wasn't teaching, she was taking students to Europe and singing in her church choir with presidents and popes for an audience. She is currently enjoying retirement, still traveling and singing and even subbing when she has time. She is missed very much at Dripping Springs High School by students and staff that she has mentored and loved over the years. Ms. Canales was at Dripping Springs ISD for 36 years, and her years in public education were all spent serving the Dripping Springs community in our schools.[546.66][546.66](APPLAUSE).
I can probably get censored for this, but I'm going to add a little bit to Tiffany's remarks. Actually, Madam Canales is married to Rick Canales, who was one of our Little League baseball coaches for many, many years, an awesome guy, but also Madam Canales and Coach Canales produce a son, Ricky, who is, we're very proud of Ricky. He's a 2014 graduate of Dripping Springs, and just want to thank you all so much for supporting your mother and your wife and your friend. Thank you so much. We love her.
Next, we'd like to invite Carl Kaiser to come be honored. Carl has taken excellent care of our school grounds for well over 20 years. His heart for service has been evident since day one, from taking care of athletic fields to driving school buses when extra help was needed. He has led a hard-working team who always go above and beyond when maintaining grounds or pitching in with any and all facilities' needs. He will be missed by all, and we wish Carl the very best in his retirement. Carl spent 22 years in Dripping Springs ISD and 22 years in public education, so all of his years of service have been for the Dripping Springs ISD community.[630.82][630.82](APPLAUSE). Next, we're going to honor retiree Gary Lemming. I don't believe that he was able to make it this evening, unless he slipped in after we started. So Gary has worked for almost 30 years in the HVAC industry, and over 20 years of that career, he spent here, leading our DSISD HVAC team. He has installed, repaired, and run the technology programs for all district HVAC systems. In recent years, Gary also mentored and trained other district staff to become HVAC technicians. His knowledge and attention to detail has been an asset to our maintenance department and the entire district. We wish Gary the best in his retirement. Gary spent 21 years with us here at Dripping Springs ISD, which are all 21 years of his service in public education as well.[686.82][686.82](APPLAUSE). Okay, with us tonight, we have Ms. Cheryl Lundberg. Cheryl Lundberg began working for Dripping Springs ISD in 1999. She's going to come down and join us at the front. Her first role was as a substitute teacher. Her areas of service in Dripping Springs have included working at Dripping Springs Middle School, Rooster Springs Elementary, and Walnut Springs Elementary as inclusion support. She was also an ARD coordinator for two years at Walnut Springs. Her last nine years of service have been at Walnut Springs in the Life Skills classrooms. We will certainly miss Ms. Cheryl's contagiously calm demeanor. She's been such an asset and has had such an impact on so many students. We are wishing her all the best and enjoyment on her new chapters in Wyoming.[737.63][737.63](APPLAUSE). Ms. Lundberg served DSISD for 18 years, which was just about all of her 22 years of service in public education. Next, we have Michelle Mahatchek, who is able to be here tonight. Ms. Mahatchek began her teaching career in 1990 in Corpus Christi ISD. She spent seven years serving in general education, and then she became a Special Education Teacher in 2000 and taught in California before returning to Texas. In January of 2005, she began working for Dripping Springs at DSMS in Life Skills. She then moved over to Dripping Springs Elementary the following August as a focus teacher. In August of 2006, she moved to Walnut Elementary, where she's worked as an ECE teacher, resource teacher, and focus teacher for the past 15 years. Michelle has been such an asset to our school community. Her service and impact with students and their families will be everlasting. We wish her and her family all the best with her retirement. Ms. Mahatchek spent 17 years with us in Dripping Springs ISD and then has served for 24 years in public education. Thank you for your service.[820.01][820.01](APPLAUSE). Next, and I believe he is here tonight, Mr. Ochoa. We're going to honor Mr. Ruben Ochoa. Ruben is one of the kindest and most thoughtful people that you will ever meet. His smile is contagious and his work ethic is impeccable. We will miss his gifts of salsa and homemade goodies, but most of all, we will miss the positive attitude and presence that he brings to him with him in his workplace every day. We wish Ruben the very best in his well-deserved retirement. Mr. Ochoa has been with the district for 16 years, and those are all 16 of the years that he's served in public education right here in our community.[865.44][865.44](APPLAUSE). Next, we're going to honor Dora Soto, who I believe was unable to attend this evening. But Dora took great pride in her work as head custodian of Dripping Springs Elementary. She's loved by all and was a joy to have as a coworker. Dora's imprint on Dripping Springs Elementary is seen every day through her wonderful custodial team. We wish Dora continued happiness in her well-deserved retirement. Dora spent 14 years with us in Dripping Springs ISD and served 22 total years in public education.[904.44][904.44](APPLAUSE). Next, we have Ms. Norma Vasquez. She is here tonight. She will be truly missed. She is the definition of a professional educator. After a 20-year career in education, she's decided to retire to spend time with her family and to travel. Norma has spent the past two and a half years in Dripping Springs ISD at Rooster Springs Elementary as a dyslexia specialist. There, she's helped numerous students crack the code with their reading skills by delivering sound instruction and fostering a safe and supportive learning environment. One of her colleagues notes, "If you need to know anything regarding explicit reading instruction, Norma is the one to call. She is current with her knowledge and loves to share that knowledge. Her students leave her room with a better understanding of the English language." Thank you, Norma, for your dedication to the education field for the past 20 years, and specifically the excellence you've shown the past two and a half years at Rooster Springs Elementary. You've been with us for three years in Dripping Springs ISD, but you've had almost 20 years of service to public education. And then we have our final retiree that we're honoring tonight, who also was unable to make it this evening, and that would be Ms. Dale Whitaker. Ms. Whitaker has led the Communications Department for the last 11 years. Many of those years were as a Department of One. Ms. Whitaker's work ethic and commitment to Dripping Springs ISD are unparalleled. You always find her at district events, all hours of the day or night, with a camera in hand capturing the amazing things our students and staff are doing. She gives her all in every aspect of her work and strives to showcase student and district accomplishments continually. She is deeply embedded in the Dripping Springs community and understands what it means to be a Tiger through and through. We are thankful for her years of service and the many communications programs she has both created and run to honor students and staff. It is a privilege to honor her tonight as she moves into this next exciting chapter. Ms. Whitaker has spent 12 years serving Dripping Springs ISD and 18 years in K-12 public education.[1037.63][1037.63](APPLAUSE). Okay, we're going to do this to you one more time. If you are here tonight, will you come down so we can take a group picture with you and honor? And if any of your loved ones want to come snap a shot, you're welcome to come do that while we do that. Okay, so as these wonderful, amazing educators and those who have dedicated their lives to public education in their various positions are taking their pictures, I just want to point out what's up on the screen. From the 11 folks that we're honoring tonight, that is a collective 184 years of service to Dripping Springs ISD specifically, and we are honoring 250 years of service to public education. That is so amazing. Thank you so much for everything that you all have done for Dripping Springs and in our field of public education. So at this time, we are going to take a brief recession from the board meeting, and we're going to go out and celebrate our retirees with some cake and some refreshments. So please join us out in the lobby, and we'll resume the board meeting here in just a few
I think we are back at 6:41. That was so enjoyable. We appreciate those who were able to join us so we could celebrate them for all of their years of service. And I'm still trying to wrap my head around 250 years of collective service to public education. That is extraordinary. We do not have anyone signed up for public forums, so we will move on to reports and information. So trustees, did you have any questions on any of those items under reports and information? Marissa?
Hi. You may have already answered some of these questions, and I may not remember, but in reading the report, and I know that Saturday school tutoring is going to begin, will there be transportation provided? I believe you said there would be.
Yes, and we are collecting that information through an enrollment process, and the parents are in the process of doing that now.
Okay. Do you know how many students are gonna?
Currently.
Oh, you're in the process, so.
To need transportation? Less than 10 at this moment. Some of them are still looking at the options.
And is the Saturday school teaching being funded? Who is it being funded by?
Okay, and that's part of the S R three that we have set aside for what they're calling learning loss. I wouldn't say it's not lost, it's just not gained because we weren't in school during 2020 spring. So it's making up. It's that supplemental instruction taking place. That's not to say that's the only time we're going to make up student's gaps in learning. We're gonna, we're still doing this in the daytime too, right? So before school tutorials, after school tutorials, and also in the moment with teaching and how we spiral lessons to make sure that those gaps are filled.
Okay. Thank you.
Barbara?
So I noticed the budget parameters was in that report section. Are we going to hear about that at this meeting?
We weren't going to, but we can certainly present if you'd like. At this time, it's for information, and then we'll actually have full agenda items next month on it.
Okay. I did have one question about it. The language about the staff healthcare, it says, should the district continue with TRS active care? Is, are we looking at alternatives or is that?
Not necessarily, but it's one of the things that came up in the legislative session, so there are options around that. Right now, we do plan on continuing with it though. We haven't necessarily determined that we're moving away from that or have any intention to, but it is an option that's available this year that's different than before.
Okay. So will we be talking more about those options or no?
We will once we've done an evaluation on that and certainly can bring that back as an item. Do you want Catherine to go through any of the budget parameters this evening for you?
No, this will be what, an action item?
It'll be, yeah, it'll be on agenda review, and we'll do a full review on it agenda review and then bring it back. And we've looked at the formats from previous years and bring it back in kind of an updated format to follow some of those.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ron?
Yeah, this is really more of a comment. I don't direct it at Dr. Kidd, but in the Learning Innovation Report, I was looking at the House Bill 4545 update. Specifically, I was really impressed with what we're doing for the extra tutoring. I think one of the things I always really struggled with, like especially, you know, starting with the pandemic, was, you know, how we make up that instructional time. And since I've had a life in education technology, I'm pretty familiar with most of the companies that you've selected for that. And I'm just really excited because they're great resources. And so I think from a board perspective, we probably would like to know, you know, some data on academic progression as a result of those tutorial efforts because it's gonna take time to catch up from, you know, the days lost, obviously. But really for, you know, any of our students who need to do a little catch-up work, that's a great resource. So thank you so much for doing that.
Great. Thank you for that feedback. It was a team effort, so it wasn't just Karen Kidd. It was the instructional coordinators along with our directors that really vetted and met with a lot of the companies and did some conversations with teachers as well at the campus level. And they went through what works best for kids. So thank you for that feedback. And yes, we are in the process of curating the list of students that will be participating in Saturday schools and so that we can monitor their progression, where they are at the beginning of the year and then where we hope to see them at the end of the year. Thank you.
Okay, so I did just want to highlight a couple of things from Board of Trustees activities. Oh, I didn't, I don't have that in my view. So let's see, we had at least three trustees. You'll have to remind me because my eyes are bad for the gap graduations. Just extraordinarily heartwarming. I participated in the Tiger Stripes program to give a shout out to Coach Norris because you can tell the passion he has for seeing these kids successfully move into a future. And any other trustees who came want to speak to that?
Yeah, I really enjoyed meeting Coach Norris and learning a little bit more about the program. It was amazing. They do some pretty innovative things over there, and those students do a lot of work in a very short amount of time. And that program is really extraordinary. And it was kind of neat to meet Coach Norris and kind of find out a little bit more about, you know, how it runs and the impact it has on those students. So thank you so much for that.
And Dripping Springs Middle School was our site visit this month and was super impressed with Ms. Caldera and Ms. Shackelford, right? And their work in enabling the entire school to participate in the same book study, sixth, seventh, eighth graders, as well as questions to help them with retention and understanding and allowing all of these kids to be speaking about the same life stories throughout this book. And they reached out to the author himself who did a video clip, and thank you for sharing that in our board report. And so I believe, I got this wrong because the kids looked, they looked so young to me, but we were in
Seventh and eighth grade.
Seventh and eighth grade. Ron was in sixth grade, listening to the exact same audio chapters at the same time and listening to the questions. So it was a very rewarding visit. And then also had the opportunity to, which was not part of a planned visit, but to see the clothes closet and really supply closet that Nurse Arnett has at DSMS. And that's, that's a perfect example of going above and beyond the scope of a nurse to have that available for that school community. So thank you to her. Okay, I can't wait to hear about Market Days from those who were able to go.
So I got to attend Market Days at Sycamore Springs Elementary School this morning, and it was, it was awesome. I had such a blast. I actually sent an email out to my board colleagues to let them know all of the wonderful arts and crafts, priceless, I should say priceless art that I bought. Like, actually, I didn't realize it, but I bought this really cool bookmark from Dr. Reinhold's daughter. And I've got a clicker thing here, and this Santa Claus koozie that a student wrote did some art on there. I mean, this is amazing stuff. And the instructional component for me was seeing how excited they were about their projects. Frankly, we have some quite exceptional salespeople and entrepreneurial spirit in those classes. And it was, it was amazing. I got, you know, some Christmas ornaments. And, oh, and one of my other favorite items is this painted Santa rock. I know Dr. Hetrick is very jealous that she doesn't have one. But, but kudos to all of our students that participate in Market Days. It's, I don't think I understood that the proceeds that they raise go toward camp champions. Is that correct?
So each campus gets to decide, their third grade gets to decide what they're doing with the funds that they've raised, yes.
Thank you. It was awesome. Job well done. Thank you.
Did you have anything to add to?
Just that it is absolutely amazing. I mean, Stephanie's able to talk about her daughter's experience of putting them together. And I have to say, it was a lot of fun. I have a tiger rock that just is absolutely special on my desk that I love. I've got some great jewelry, some, a new spider ring, and some really fun items that I'm excited about that, you know, we both have a carload, I think, of stuff. But the amazing thing is, you know, the things that you get to go, the conversations you get to have with the kids, and they're talking about money. We worked on counting change with one of them when I gave him $5, and that got a little confusing. So, you know, it's a wonderful time. The teachers were glowing. It just, it's an amazing opportunity to get to spend the day visiting them. So next Market Day, I'm going to bring you all with me. It's one of my favorite things now.
Very good.
So, we did have another XG meeting, so thank you. I just want to, every time, tell my colleagues how much I appreciate, it's an investment of time, but, you know, it's all for, you know, guiding the district moving forward and making sure we're all speaking the same language and looking at the same goals, and it's been a very productive process. And CTSBA was last week, and the focus of, that's the Central Texas School Board Association, and the advocacy calendar that starts with grassroots meetings, so for Region 13, that is on January 19th, and I am pretty sure that it's at TASB headquarters this year and not the Region 13 main office as in prior years, but I'll make sure about that. And we can be thinking about whether we want to participate in an advocacy resolution, as we've done from time to time, so you can be thinking what that might entail. And then the last thing I had was that the Dripping Springs Education Foundation had their grant paw patrol, as they call it, go through the campuses this past week, and I was able to join a couple of those and see just how impactful it is to those teachers. And it's really heartwarming to see how appreciative they are, because it's for the kids. It's just one more way to help our students, so. Marissa, did you have anything else with Education Foundation? We had the monthly meeting last week.
Just always very thankful for them and their continued support. At our last meeting, they're really making a push toward having family and friends begin to donate in any way you can, whether it's $5 a month, $10 a month, it makes a difference. And I know that when I was a teacher and they came in and talked to us, I felt a little intimidated. I thought, "I can't sit here and give tons of money per month," but, you know, I think I contributed $15, $20 a month. And so, I think that's what they're trying to get that word out, to, it can be $5 a month, it doesn't have to be like you have to donate $1,000 a month or be some sort of high-roller. Any little bit helps. So, I would just encourage anybody or any of the staff, if they want to give $5, $10 a month, it would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, thank you so much. Are there any other questions on the reports and information section tonight? Okay, well, we will move on to presentations and discussion, and first is our Student Success Report.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to start with Student Success before you click, sorry. Just to talk really briefly, just so you're aware, inside of the LNI report, there was a little blurb about moving away from the word AP courses to honors. That's because the College Board is telling us if you're using that signature AP language, you have to purchase the curriculum, and we've done a great job in our AP or honors classes, building that curriculum. And so, you'll hear that switch, but there's no other switch other than the name, so it still has the same ranking, still the same rigor, we just have to move away from advanced placement and go into honors. So, I want to just say that would be a huge success for us to all be on the same page about that. When we start with registration in the spring, the parents will start hearing about that. I just want everybody to be aware that that is just a name change, okay? And then jumping into our kindergarten through second grade, we wanted to focus for you with kindergarten and second grade, really on that early literacy piece. As you know, we did the beginning-of-the-year assessments. We're in the process right now of doing middle-of-the-year assessments, and so for the next Student Success Report, hopefully, we'll be able to look at the two and see the growth in that. But for this moment in time, we're gonna focus on that, and if you go to the next slide and also some MAP at the end, there's basically three components that we're looking, going to be looking at, and this is with our kindergarten assessment. It's called the Texas Kindergarten Entry Assessment, and we just shorten that in education like we do everything. And we do, we call it TexKia. And so, with TexKia, we're looking at three main areas. So, statewide literacy screener is that first measure, we're gonna look at the first chart for that, and that looks at the vocabulary, letter names and spelling. And then we're also going to look at language and communication. It includes another component of vocabulary, but also with that, listening comprehension. And then that emergent literacy reading. It does the letter names with the sounds and the blending of the two. And so, you can go ahead and click on the next slide, and just so we're all on the same page about what these indications mean. There's on-track monitor and support with this system, and it is just what it seems. On-track means you are, your student is performing where the expectation is. Monitor is maybe a little bit off, we need to just watch, and then support means that student might need some additional supports, both in the campus and then at home as well. And so, if you go to the next slide, this gives you that first view of the literacy screener. And if you look, we're in the high 90s, low to high 90s on the on-track. We have just a few in the monitor, and it broke it down by campus, and then the support. And so, what's happening behind the scenes is our teachers are aware of this, as are literacy experts on the campus, dyslexia therapists, and then in PLCs, they're looking at this data to really ensure students are getting what they need. And just as a reminder, all pre-K to third-grade teachers are going through, reading academies, and the reading academies is really fine-tuning this type of information and how we meet the students where they are for interventions. And so, going on to that next language screener, still in TexKia. Again, pretty pleased with the scores of the students that are coming to us on track, and then the minimal support-needed students, and we're hopeful that as the course of the year goes on, that number needing support starts to diminish, especially as teachers graduate from reading academies. And then the third slide under kindergarten is that literacy reading, and this one is a little bit lower, as should be expected, because it has more comprehensive skills noted inside of that assessment, and so you're gonna see more needing support. These are kindergarten babies who maybe have not been in school yet, so they're still learning, and this is where we come in as teachers and bring them to that next level. Okay, moving on, we're gonna go into first and second grade. They use the Texas Primary Reading Inventory, and that's shortened to TPRI. That's also offered in Spanish as Tejas Lay. I was going to be able to give you the Tejas Lay report, but there was a little issue with the reporting from the platform, not from us, but we're waiting for that to get cleared up. As soon as it's made available, I will make that readily available to the board. But let's go over, just like we had with TexKia, the on-track support needed. This has its own little designation, it's still developing and developed. Pretty simple, but still developing doesn't mean F, and we're not expecting all students to always be developed. It's a process, and it's a flow, and it's a continuum, where some skills, based on the student, in some ways will be still developing because it hasn't been taught yet, and sometimes they will regress because it's not taught at that level at that time. But hopefully, by the end of the year, you'll start seeing those still developing dwindle and the developed be more prevalent. Okay, so let's go into that, and this is just an overview. So, first grade's on the top, and so, 327 students scored developed, so that's about 52.4%. And then, I'm not gonna have to read all that to you, but you can see where they are, the still developing. That means we're still working on some skills for that first-grade screener, and then for some reason, we had 73 students not assessed, and we're trying to figure out what, is that part of the Tejas Lay issues that we're having, and those students aren't showing up, we noticed. As we're building this report, there were some technology, and not our technology, the software program issues that we're trying to work through. Same thing with second grade. You'll see that 60% are developed, 30% still developing, and then we had 49 students that not, that were not scored. Okay, now moving on to MAP. MAP is more of a second through eighth-grade assessment, both in math and reading, so it kind of gives us that bigger picture outside of Texas, but it is still, you can take a MAP score and align it to the standards. What I've done here is the way MAP works, or NWEA, is they take approaches as a single measure, then they move on to meets as a single measure, and then they move on to masters as a single measure. And if you can see the chart I put up the right, is more STAR language. So, according to the state, if you are meets, you also approaches, and if you're masters, you also meet and approach. So, I just combined that, so we can kind of see the numbers like we're used to seeing. And so, what's really interesting about this MAP score is that we are consistently seeing in that masters, for our grade levels, we're consistently seeing increases in the masters area, which is great. That means students are still performing, even with this learning loss, and I do this quote, "Even with this, we're still seeing an increase in the numbers that are hitting that masters." And this, I'm sorry, I forgot to say this, these are the students that are projected to make this score on STAR, based on their MAP score. So, because it's beginning of the year, we still have a long way to go to fill the students with a lot of learning experiences so that they can be even more successful than what it's saying on MAP. And so, if you look at the did-not-meet students, those are the ones that we're gonna focus in on, see what standards they're missing or where we can support them and provide those opportunities for the support so that they can be successful. And then same thing, same format with reading, and again, the same dynamic. In the masters area, we're seeing more, and when I say we're seeing more, I'm saying from the spring to now. So, from spring '21, end of year to now, we're seeing increase in masters. And so, that's really encouraging. So, I'm really hopeful that in our middle-of-the-year typically, that we will see some more growth, and then by the end of the year, we'll see more gaps closing. And that's that, and the full-on Student Success Report, I just pulled out for this, just the data piece, and so I did offer another longer success report, that if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those now.
Trustees, any questions on that report? The one question I have that might be something incredibly elementary that I just missed, but on the TPRI, those not scored, there's no chance that those are students that are new to our district?
We looked at that, they literally are showing no score in the system, but they're not new enrollees. And so, we're thinking there is a disconnect between the student ID and the way that they were assessed, and so we're still drilling down into that. Possibly, yes, there are some, but when we just did a spot check, they were already here, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We will move on to the first reading of Policy Update 118. Dr. Morris, can it's?
Good evening, board members. I'm bringing you Policy Update 118 from TASB. This update is primarily focused on the changes that they have provided in red line for us to policy, based on the 87th regular legislative session. There are still special session updates that we will get later from TASB, but this is really based on this summer's regular session. So, it's all of our legal policy as well as local policy. So, the local policies that we have are listed for you on the board item sheet. There are 11 of those. And so, all of the policy, both legal and local, have been assigned to our district administrators, and we're reading through those, making sure that we're applying all of those appropriately throughout our district, and then also looking at our local policy to make sure that really matches our practice. I have looked at all of them, there aren't anything major in them as far as changes, a lot of it is language changes and tweaks and some alignment from TASB. So, so far, nothing within the local policy that seems concerning, but again, we're looking at that at each administrative level to make sure that we've really done a thorough review. And then we'll come back next month with these policies for y'all and have a more thorough conversation about any of our recommendations, if we actually do have any recommendation changes for them. But right now, it looks to be fairly standard 87th legislative session updates to policy from TASB. So, I wanted to see if y'all had any questions about any of those.
Ron?
So, when do we need to approve that?
So, we'll do that in January.
Okay.
We'll bring back to you the second reading, which I'll have, so it's so much information that we try to do it into, so that you have a chance to look at them all for one month, and then we'll bring them back. And at that same time, we're doing a deep review of them to make sure that we understand them all and can speak to them all for y'all as well.
And is there a deadline, like when it has to be approved?
No, I mean, so, a lot of them went into effect starting in September, according to the legislative session, and then obviously, they were the special sessions that had additional changes that happened throughout that, that we'll get those updates from TASB, probably in January, they said.
Barb?
I have a few questions, and yeah, if you wanna, I'll say what they are now, if you wanna, we can have more discussion about it next month, but I wanted to-
Perfect.
... give you plenty of opportunity.
Okay.
So, the first one is CFD Local, and that's the one about activity funds. They changed the wording a little bit, and it says, "The superintendent shall ensure district accounting practices and procedures address the activity funds." So, can you talk a little bit about, I know you've indicated that you've encountered some challenges or some inconsistencies in, you know, how, where our practices and procedures are stored. So, can you talk through that a little bit, like for a policy like this that requires that? Where are those housed? And wouldn't it be awesome, this is probably a pipe dream, but like if our board policy could hyperlink to those, that would be so exciting, but I don't know if-
So, they used to be, so those are really kind of more like administrative regulations. They used to be within Board Book. TASB actually took them out and removed them. So, they're now on our website, so if you go to the Business Services website, then that's gonna have the procedures manuals, and so that's what they're called here, is procedures manuals, and we've got those linked there that align to these policies.
Okay. So, basically, you're saying if somebody is looking at board policy and they want to find it, they have to go out and hunt for it on our website, basically?
Well, they'll go to the department-
Okay.
... and look at the department, which says, kind of specifically, here's what you do based on that department's function. So, HR has procedures manuals, Business Services has procedures manuals, and so, yeah, that's kind of the structure for that. And then we are looking at other systems for, as a district, where do we wanna, where do we want to store all of that in one place?
Okay, awesome. Next one is on DP Local, and that's the one about school counselors, let me scroll to that. School counselors shall spend at least 80% of their time on duties that are components of a comprehensive school counseling program. I know I've seen that, like, in the past, but it's been a long time that we've looked at, how do our counselors spend our time?
That is from this legislative session. And then Tisha has really been doing that work with our counselors, so I know that she's been really focused on that, she was aware of that, and so, when she has done a couple of meetings with the counselors, she's looked at that to make sure that we really are appropriately asking work of them, to make sure that it's really aligned to those percentages, because that is legislated.
Yeah, and I mean, I know we've looked at that as a district, like, in the past, probably when we've done counseling reviews, and we've gotten reports on how are they spending their time. So, I guess my question is, is there gonna be like a cycle that, you know, once y'all finish looking at that, is there gonna be a cycle that that gets reported to the board so we know that? So, we know if it's 80% or 82% or 87%?
And so, y'all did that as a counseling review? I have not talked with her about doing a counseling review since-
It's been a long time. I just know I've seen in the past reports of how our counselors did spend their time, because we've looked at it for staffing, how many counselors do we need? So, I know I've seen it in the distant past, but now that it is, you know, they've specifically passed this law, that's my question, is that something that will be reported to the board, either as a one-time or on some kind of regular reporting cycle?
Yeah, let me get with Tisha and talk about that and see, you know, what the best way would be to bring that information back.
Okay, awesome. And then the last one is FFG, the one about reporting child abuse and neglect. Lawyers get really focused on specific words, and it looks like the change they're making is, for our professionals who have to report child abuse and neglect, and nobody, nobody wants to be in that position, but they're changing the language now. Instead of "our professionals" having "cause to believe," it's "reasonable cause to believe." So, if you could just get some feedback for us on why that change and what that change means for our professionals, is there, are they trying to make it-
Why TASB added the word reasonable?
Yes, is that trying to, are they trying to make it more restrictive, less restrictive? Are they trying to tie it to an objective standard rather than a subjective standard? I just, I want to make sure we understand why that change is, and then that our people understand how that affects, you know, them doing their work, what that change might mean for them, so.
Okay, thanks.
And that's it, thank you.
Great questions. Mine is just more general, and I know that when we do the deep dive in January, that this can be touched on, of, because some of the changes, you know, it was very apparent that it was because of this last legislative session, there were others where I just didn't remember any pieces of legislation, but as long as staff is ready to report on the why behind all of them in January. Any other trustee, or questions, trustees? Okay. Thank you. We will move now to our consent agenda. Does anyone have questions on those items under consent?
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as posted.
Okay, we have a motion by Ron, second by Marissa. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Five, zero. Thank you. Our first action item is consideration and approval of the budget planning calendar.
Yes, thank you so much, trustees, for joining us this morning, and for this evening, and Madam President-
And Madam President, put before you the 2022-23 budget and tax rate preparation and adoption calendar. Generally, this is similar to the structure that we followed in years past. We will be looking at some additional programmatic ways of taking a closer look now that we have new fresh eyes, both with myself and the Director of Finance, who has joined us recently, taking a look at campus allocations and thinking through how we're going to do them for next year. And so we will adopt our budget in June and of course, then adopt the tax rate after the state has helped us determine what that rate will be in July. So I'm happy to take any questions, if you all have any about the item before you.
Marissa?
I noticed here that we, in January to February, you would have budget training for campuses and departments. I, to be honest with you, I don't remember if that's happened in the past, but can you tell me what that looks like? What does the training look like?
Well, the training basically looks like introducing them to the allocation spreadsheets that we provide for them and talking them through historically what has occurred in their particular department before, because I know we have several, at least one principal who's new. And so wanting to give them an opportunity to understand historically what has happened, to take a look at what was budgeted for them this year, and then encouraging them to to take a look at all of those items and consider how they're being used this year. If they're already moving some things around within their department, maybe that's something to consider for next year and certainly to consult with us about, you know, maybe some issues or problems or opportunities that they've seen and helping them try to address those as we we talk through the following school year.
I'm assuming that helps the campuses also kind of streamline so that everybody has equality per se?
Yes, and you know, one of the wonderful things that I've really enjoyed the last couple of months of just starting here is I've already had a chance, with the exception of our high school principal having a chance to visit with them already about just how have you understood your budget this year? I want to understand things from your perspective. What are some things that you think we ought to know in in central office? So that way, we have that transparency and that ease of communication about what do you need for your your classroom? What are some things that we need to work with you on? And that, those sorts of things so that we can just all be seamless, especially as we continue to grow.
Barbara?
And I apologize, I did not send these questions in advance. It kind of, the meeting kind of snuck up on me with the not having agenda reviews, so I do apologize. I had a couple of questions about the calendar. One is, could we add that in January, that the board is approving the budget parameters? Add that to the calendar?
Yeah, that's an easy change for sure.
And then my other question was, it looks like we've got May 23rd budget planning update for board of trustees. My question is, I'm wondering if we would want to do, have a board workshop maybe earlier or more than just that one? I know in other years, we've done more than one and and certainly earlier, so I would ask if we could, you know, I don't know.
No, I think that'd be wonderful, a budget workshop sometime this spring, well well ahead of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Because May seems a little close to adoption. So if we could add additional board workshops, that would be great.
Yes, we can get with y'all and find the right date for that. And maybe we do it like we did last time, that was kind of the longer day, a little bit of the extended session.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on this item? It is an action item for us tonight. Barbara?
So I would move that we approve the budget planning calendar with the changes discussed, adding the January adoption of budget parameters and with the understanding that an earlier budget workshop, board budget workshop will be added earlier than May.
Okay, we have a motion from Barbara, second from Marissa. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Next, we move on to consideration and approval of the district calendar for 2022-23.
Yes, so before you, you have draft version D. We started with A, so you can see it went to several different iterations. This was given to our district advisory council for review, draft A and B. They looked at it and came up with a hybrid C. They took it to campuses and got feedback from staff and then also through PTA and the the parent representatives took it to those entities for feedback. And so through that feedback, we ended up with version D. So as a reminder, we need 75,600 instructional minutes. We need 187 teacher days. And so our current instructional minute time is 435 minutes a day for instruction based on our current bell schedule. And so a lot of feedback that we received from our teaching staff is that they wish there was more time for workdays. And so if you do the workday, you can't take the professional learning waiver. Remember, the state allows us 2,100 minutes to waive for instruction to add to that 75,600 minutes. And so in that, the state's saying you have to have structured learning for teachers. And so that's not a workday. So you have to be really mindful of the workdays that were allotted. The parent teacher conference for elementary does not count as the instructional waiver days, so we have to be really mindful of that. And so the calendar you have before you meets the parameters of the 187 teacher workdays, 173 student instructional days at 435 minutes per day. That gets us to 75,255. Then we're going to come back to the board in the spring, once that waiver opportunity opens with the state and ask for that 2,100 minutes waiver for four days of professional learning, which gets us up to 76,995 minutes, which is over the amount, which is where you want to be to give you that buffer. So that surplus of 1,300 or so minutes gives us a three-day buffer, including the two bad weather makeup days. So this is the calendar that you see. Unfortunately, the calendar with 187 days, it does mean that we do have teachers coming back after Memorial Day, that's easy for me to say. But that does give them an opportunity to clean their rooms, pack up if they're moving classrooms or what have you, close down the classroom kind of thing. So we'd like that. The feedback we got was, we'd like to finish before May, but with that 187-day parameter, that was nearly impossible. So we could start earlier in August, but that was not a popular decision either. And so just wanted to put that all out there and ask if you had any questions.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, so the teachers would work, it's because I see it stopping on the 30th. So the 26th would be the last day for the kiddos in May, and then the teachers would work until the 30th?
Well, they would have off the 29th and then come back on that Tuesday as a workday.
And then that would be it?
Yes.
Okay.
So when I look at, you know, discussions in other districts, and all of the gymnastics that go into the what ifs, if, could you help, pardon, could you explain and differentiate the professional development day where we are prescribing what they need to be studying versus they just have additional time built into the calendar?
For sure. So TEA's expectation, if it's a, considered a waiver day, the 2,100 minutes, is that we have a structured learning with sign and sheets. And one sign and sheet is not enough. You have to make sure that the learning carries on for the whole entire day. Or if it's supposed to be a half day, then that's fine, too. We did get feedback that teachers would like a half day. You just have to show the evidence of that learning. There's always something to learn as a teacher and educator in in public schools, so that's not the hard part. The hard part is knowing as a teacher that you still have grades to do and grades to turn in, or we're looking at interventions for kids and really being able to personalize that learning. That's where we we can start having those conversations, maybe start that conversation now. If we adopt this calendar, to start thinking about what does a 10-minute extension look to our day? If we adjust bell schedules by 10 minutes, does that afford our teacher, teachers more opportunities for a true workday? That's not a waiver day. That gives them that opportunity to really drill down and meet the needs of kids in a different way, where they're not asked to do that on their personal time or weekends. That's just something that we need to think about and consider as we're building our bell schedules for next year, our master schedule, along with transportation and the impact that has to the transportation department. So Dr. Morris Koontz is entertaining the idea for the future of potential increasing possibly our instructional time to 445 minutes. That would really give us a nice buffer to meet the needs of our teachers for the the time that they're requiring, but also our instructional minutes at the same time.
So are you saying that if this calendar is approved tonight, you still have the flexibility to change the daily schedule to build in?
So essentially, yes, yes and no. We can't change the number of days. It still has to maintain the 187 days. So I couldn't, for example, take away that May 30th. If we change the 10 days, teachers still have to be here 187 days or Tiffany does not like that. But what we could do is look really creatively. We want to ensure that we're providing the professional learning our teachers are requiring and that our campuses are seeking of them, but we also want to be mindful of the times of the year that they might need just a workday, like the January when they come back typically is a great time for teachers just to have a break, to regroup and have a workday. And so being mindful of what that might look like in the future. And then as we build future calendars, you know, that's something that we always look to other districts and say, how are you doing it? What are you doing? Some districts are able to offer more time for teacher workdays. Let's just give an example for September. We only have the day off in September, but no workdays. If we had the additional minutes in the future, possibly for the 22, 23, no, 23, 24 school year, we could look at adding a workday in September and not impacting the need to have a waiver so it's a structured professional learning. And just as a reminder, the waiver only counts for days after the instructional year starts. And so those August days, the 8th through the 15th, do not count. So those can be, we do have embedded workdays in there because those are not considered waivable days.
Yeah, every calendar is just such a balancing act. It's a trade-off. And so you hear districts and you go, well, gosh, they have these days here, but then they may not do the week at Thanksgiving or they don't do a full two weeks at winter break. So you end up with, you know, you have to have the 187, so you're trading somewhere no matter what. And so when you see something else in another calendar and you like that about it, you just have to know that has to come from somewhere else. So we have to kind of look at the calendar holistically. And if we like one element and we're trying to add that element, we just have to know that may have an impact somewhere else in the calendar. So it's kind of prioritizing the things that are, you know, most important first within that calendar. And that's, you know, why a committee goes through four calendars before they kind of get to that final point of, these are the things we want to protect first.
Right, well, I'm certainly very appreciative of the DAC and all of the work that goes into that. Trustees, any other questions? This is an action item for us tonight. And someone, Marissa?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the academic calendar for the 2022-2023 school year.
Okay, you have a motion from Marissa, a second from Stephanie. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Five oh, thank you for all your work on that. Next is consideration and approval of bond advisory committee alternates. Clint?
I think I got the short chair. Good evening, board. And we had originally brought this for discussion last month. We had two positions, two alternate positions that are vacant on the bond advisory committee. It's a, it's a nine-person committee with two alternates. And we had a member that resigned, that we that we filled one of the alternate positions and then the other alternate had stepped down. So we, we have two alternates and the, according to the the BAC's operating procedures, if the number of alternates falls below two, then the board will appoint additional alternates. And so we had opened up the application process for the BAC alternates last month for a couple of weeks. We received a total of 10 applicants and tonight, we are recommending that the board name Christopher Newton and Jennifer Perry to fill the two vacant bond advisory committee alternate positions. Mr. Newton is an engineer and Ms. Perry is a director for the Texas Cultural Trust and I think used to be with the Del Valley ISD. And so tried to to bring recommendations that provide the best fit in terms of the expertise on, that's already on the committee and adding additional expertise. And so we feel like these two, these two people that we are bringing forward would do an excellent job at filling those two vacant positions.
And I'm assuming, sorry, I'm assuming you spoke to them and they were agreed to be the alternates?
Well, they, right, they've applied and pending conversation tonight, then we'll certainly confirm that, but yes.
Okay, so it sounds like you've gone through the expertise that rolled off and we're doing our best to.
Yes, combination of expertise and then coverage from across the district. One of the, one of the people that we're recommending, Ms. Perry is a parent at Cypress Springs, and so we don't currently have a representative that that has children or grandchildren that have attended that campus. So a combination of the expertise and also trying to make sure that we have coverage from across the district.
Okay. Any other questions? Stephanie?
I'm just curious, do you have somewhere on our website that lists all of the current members and kind of little blurbs, like you've done this applicant pool?
There is a page on the website that, for the bond advisory committee, that just lists them by name and the and the the chairperson. And there should be on the attachment for this of, at the bottom, where it had the background information for the 10 applicants, the the nine committee members and their representation and what their profession is.
Is there any way we can have little bio blurbs on all of these people, too? So a lot of, I mean, I think a lot of newer people to the community, these are a lot of members that have served in the past, and then there was sort of a COVID hiatus and now things are ramping up with this committee. I think it would be nice transparency just to have a little bit fully fleshed out information on everyone who's making decisions. Because you've done a really good job of us all seeing everything for the applicants, but for the current members, a lot of people don't know who these people are.
Yeah, I think that would be fine. I think we'd probably just want to talk with the committee and let them know we're putting that information publicly out there about them on a website since, I mean, that's their personal information.
Yeah, I can certainly work with with Holly and Jennifer to, yeah, put something together.
I do see that there are a couple engineers already on the committee. Was there something else that Christopher Newton kind of brought specifically other than just that, his engineering background?
I think, I mean, primarily the engineering background and like it's like 25 years of engineering and this civil engineering. And so I think, you know, having that level of expertise with a couple of members on the bond advisory committee with with some of the discussions that we have, it's been helpful to this point and just thought that it, that it, that it was prudent and made sense to to backfill those alternate positions with with some additional depth from that standpoint.
I do see, though, that the current committee doesn't have a whole lot of educational background on it. And I think it it is a very important perspective, obviously. I mean, we're building schools.
Right. And that's the one thing about Ms. Perry is the, her previous position was with another school district.
I did see that.
As an art teacher and performing, was I think a director of fine arts before moving on to the position that she's in currently.
Yeah, I think, I mean, to to me, it just, it looks very engineering heavy on the current committee. And so I personally would have liked to see a little bit more diversity. committee, and so I personally would have liked to see a little bit more diversity from that perspective. But I do understand every type of engineering is very different, and you need lots of different perspectives. That's just my opinion, though.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Clint? Thank you for bringing recommendations to us. Ron?
I move that the board approve naming Christopher Newton and Jennifer Perry to fill the two vacant bond advisory committee alternate positions.
We have a motion from Ron, a second from Barbara. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Five-oh, thank you. Thanks for all your work on that, Clint. Next, we have a consideration and approval of board policy EHB local and EHBA local. It's like Ms. Hogan?
Good evening, board. We do have two legal policies, one for EHB and one for EHBA, but we are in need of adding two local policies per TEA recommendations. EHB local talks about our need to train our teachers who work with our students with dyslexia. We have been doing, following this policy, we just didn't have it noted in our local policy, and so we need to update that. And then EHBA local addresses our need to evaluate students who are receiving early childhood intervention services, their community services by their third birthday, and have services ready and available by their third birthday. Again, we've been following these policies, we just haven't had them written in our local policy, so looking to adopt those.
Barbara?
So EHB says, in accordance with administrative procedures, will provide training about dyslexia. So where, did those administrative procedures exist, and where would those be found?
Yes, so through our, we have our administrative procedures updated to what's called the legal framework. And so you can go in there and look at what our operating guidelines or operating procedures are internally, as well as what our local policies look like and our legal policies. And so when you go to that framework, you can see our legal is updated, but our local is not, and then there's additional internal procedural, procedural guidelines for how that, that looks. It's also on our website. Did I answer a question?
Okay, so if I went to your department, I could find administrative procedures I could click on?
There's information about early childhood evaluation and child find on the website. It should be at the bottom of the front page. And if it's not, there should be a tab on the left that says child find. I'm sorry, I'm lying. I'm talking about EHBA, sorry, and that's the early childhood piece. The dyslexia piece, I believe, is noted on our dyslexia website, but I am not certain that's where you would find it. I know it's noted in our handbook as far as the requirements for training. So our new, new teachers do a six-hour TEA provided training that's online, and then our returning teachers are updated annually with a one-hour training from the dyslexia teachers on their campus.
Okay, thank you.
And then that handbook is also linked on our website, on your page, and it does have an awareness program for parents and educators.
So, I mean, I guess it's a similar question when I ask about one eighteen, and I don't know if you can, what are, because I know we changed, and I know we changed policy consultants in the last year also. I, I don't, I mean, if somebody, you know, I mean, it's, somebody's doing good to find board policy, right, and go look at board policy, but then once they're there, if they're reading about something and it references them to an administrative procedure, it'd be nice if there was a way for them to find it. I know you're saying with, if it was regulations and it was attached, that was super easy, but then TASB recommended changing that, so maybe TASB has some great ideas for...
Yeah, I mean, in our district, the way that I find them is it's under each department. So when you're, when you're looking at something specific within the policy, those manuals right now we're finding on the department pages. And yes, that's something we can certainly evaluate for kind of where centrally would that be. At the moment, that's where they all live, though. So they do, they do live somewhere tied to their policy, but...
Because we could find, I mean, you, y'all could find it, and we could probably find it, but I worry about just, you know, a parent that is trying to study up on something, and, you know, maybe they have a dyslexic child, so they're trying to, you know, study up on that.
And we are in the process of looking at our website as well, because we want it to be parent-friendly, of course, or community-friendly, and just as we plug along, we find these things that maybe need to be refreshed.
So that'd be great if we had a way to link our policy when it refers out to something to, to make it where people could find it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Stephanie?
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious how these actually look in practice, because you said this is something we're already doing. And I guess more curious even for the EHBA, I mean, very silly question, but do we have that many three-year-olds in our district, or is this within child development we're even talking about, or like, kind of tell me the scope of what this really means?
Sure, so any community member, so this is a little bit two-part. So this is specifically referring to a student who might be served through like any baby can or Head Start, so some of those community early childhood interventions. So maybe they've been seeing, being seen birth to, up to that age three. So our requirement for this, for this particular policy is that when, you know, say I'm a parent and my child is two, I need to start reaching out, and the early childhood people will tell you, you need to start reaching out to the school district and saying you need an evaluation. And we work with any baby can or early, any ECI service to help transition that student to us, and we have to do it by their third birthday. And so that takes a lot of communicating between our evaluators, whether it's speech therapists or a school psychologist that, or the early childhood team. We actually have a team of people that do the evaluation, and they do play-based assessment to see what supports and services that student would need in our school by age three. That's part one. Now, part two is just any, any parent in the community that is concerned about their child is absolutely able to ask for an evaluation with our early childhood team. And so that could happen at any time. Maybe they don't have concerns at age three, but as for, they're like, ooh, they're really not developing where they need to be. But that, just this particular one is addressing those kids who, they've already been identified as having a need earlier than three, and so ensuring that those services are continuous and that they don't miss a beat.
I guess this is as good as time of any, but when a child is starting school within our district, so whether that's pre-K or kinder, do we have a process for identifying those dyslexia students?
Well, this is specifically for special education students, so not just...
The EHBA, yeah.
Yes.
I guess I'm sort of joining them both in my head, but I, I mean, I guess for both too. Is there a way, because I feel like we can get hung up even on the child's third birthday, which I'm still thinking is a very small subset of probably what this policy's full intent is intended to be, which is obviously so kids don't fall through the cracks when they're starting school. And so they're thinking, if we can catch them when they're three, and yet I'm anticipating most parents probably are not even thinking this way until their kids start school. So do we, I mean, do we have even kind of a broader scope of this?
We do, so, and when I, earlier I mentioned, we have information on our website about child find. It is our duty to find children who may be in need of supports and services. And so even just this weekend, I was talking to somebody who lives in the community, and they said, well, my cousin lives here, and she, her child isn't talking yet. And so it's my duty to say, here's my card, give me a call. And so as educators, that's our responsibility. And then we have outreach to daycares if they have concerns. We have pediatricians in the area who, when they say, you know, see a child in their office that they may have some concerns, they'll say, you need to, here's the people you need to give a call to. And so there's several layers to it, and just providing that information to parents and that you have the right to ask for an evaluation if you have any concerns. It's been a little harder with COVID because they haven't been in daycare, and they also haven't had as many social opportunities, so it's, it's been a little trickier, and it was the number of students being evaluated for that particular age group slowed down a little bit, but we continue to do that outreach to ensure that any student that needs services and supports gets what they need.
Okay, so just paraphrasing all of that, most of this is done with community outreach. This is not specifically within our schools unless we're talking about an actual evaluation happening for the...
Yes, I mean, we do have, we do have plenty of parents that will give us a call and say, hey, I'm concerned about their language, can you do an evaluation? But most of it is community outreach, and especially for EHBA, that, that early intervention services folks will connect with us as well, so that we make sure to meet that kid's needs on or by their third birthday.
And I guess to just kind of fully hammer my point home, I'm assuming that EHB is sort of to tail-end this, where our staff is now educated enough to kind of identify, at least for, from the dyslexia angle, is that sort of part of it?
It's about identification and understanding how to support those students and what that disability looks like for students in the classroom, what supports and services are available for them, what accommodations would be appropriate. So it's a pretty broad training, that six-hour, and then the refresher, of course, each year.
Okay. I just always want to be sure that when we're putting policies into action, that we're, there's an intent behind it, and that there's actually impact to our district, rather than just, oh, we adopted this policy, and now it didn't even go anywhere.
Well, and these are TEA-driven, so we, we, like I said, we have been doing them because we've been guided to do them, which is what's best for kids anyway.
Yeah, thank you.
And can I just emphasize, you said it, but I just want to say it again, because, yeah, people don't understand, we have a child find duty. They're not our students yet because they're too little, but we have a duty to go out and find them and make sure they're getting the supports they need, so when they do come to us, they'll be ready to learn. And parents don't always understand that, I mean, people just don't get it, but even if they're not our students, we have that duty.
We actually serve students birth to three, if they are students with visual impairment or auditory impairment. So we, we serve a wide variety of students, all the way up to age twenty-two.
Well, it's great to reiterate, and I'm glad to hear that our local pediatricians know to reach out to the district.
And as we grow, we just kept, keep, you know, oh, there's a new doctor in town. So we do, do have some posters and things that we post around, and again, it's on our website, but we can always be even more clear about that, to ensure people understand what that looks like.
All right, any other questions on this item? Marissa?
I move to approve the adoption of board policy EHB local and EHBA local.
Thank you. We have a motion from Marissa, a second from Ron. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Five-oh, thank you. Thanks so much, and you're up next, aren't you?
Yes, I am.
Now for consideration and approval of our special education audit.
Yes, so just a little background, as you, I think, are aware, we are currently under a TEA desk audit. It's a part of their cyclical review for school districts, and so it is our year to receive just the desk audit, which includes looking at our policies. So that is one piece, how we identified that we were missing those two local policies. And so then also, everything else was great, we were just missing those two, and they actually let us know that those were pretty common with all the other folks that are under desk review. So there was some little glitch in how those policies got posted. But they're looking at our local policies and policies posted to the legal framework and also our legal policies. And the other thing they're doing is doing a sample of our special education folders, and so I believe we had to send them like thirty-six special education folders that had a variety of students, and they looked through them, and we have not gotten the results of that yet, but we're, they're going to tell us, you know, is our paperwork in check, and are we following all the legal pieces of that? So go back a little bit, in 2016, prior to my arrival and several other people's arrival, there was a special education audit done by desk tenant associates, and that had a fairly narrow focus, really just looking at our staffing practices and giving some feedback on how we might better serve our kids with the staff that we had, and if we needed to make adjustments to that. So right now, we're asking for an audit to be done by TASB, and the reason we were suggesting TASB is because the depth of their, of their audit that would include some folder review, and so they either do a ten percent folder review or a five percent folder review. And so because we were also having that TEA folder review simultaneously, they felt like we would still get a good picture of what, what our practices were with the five percent folder audit. They would also do things such as meeting individually with administrators, meeting with campus stakeholders, doing surveys, so looking at some of that qualitative data from the staff that work with our students, in addition to observing in classrooms, looking at our data, such as our instructional scores, to ensure that we are really addressing our students' needs, also looking at a workload analysis, so where some, some folks may just do like a sheer staff to student ratio, they're going to really look at, well, if you're serving ten kids that have these needs, it's different than serving these ten kids who have a higher need. And so walking us through that process and looking at how we're doing things here in Dripping Springs, and then also coming and doing some site visits for us to really get a good idea on what it looks like here in Dripping Springs.
This, going through these attachments, it was illuminating for me to just realize the differences in scope of potential audits and a reminder of why we're layering another audit on top of the TEA audit. And I, I can't imagine how much work that is for your office, but I'm grateful to see because, you know, in the end, it's to make sure that all kids are having their needs met appropriately, so. Trustees, did you have, Ron?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Would the desk audit be done concurrently with the, the TASB audit?
So TEA, we have already submitted all of our documents, they've given us a little bit of feedback, like, hey, do you happen to have this? You know, we've been playing back and forth with them, and I believe they were going to give us some feedback December, early January. So that would be done prior to TASB initiating there. If I, their audit, so when I spoke with the representative from TASB, we were looking at timelines, and she really was kind to work with us and talk about looking at our staffing practices first, because that has budget implications, and we talked about staffing earlier in the spring. And so they were going to focus on that first, before they ever looked at really the more technical pieces that don't require budgeting or any other discussion about movement of staff. So they were looking at a February, end of February, for the staffing practices and workload analysis, and then everything else to be done and reviewed by the end of April.
Yeah, Ron, I think, if you'll recall, when we started talking about this, it was kind of at the beginning of the year, we knew we had the TEA audit coming, but we knew that was really limited in scope, to your point, Mary Jane, and so the board wanted to expand that and make sure that we were really thorough about what we were looking at within special services, and so TASB provided that. So it's kind of the layered, that's starting to wrap up, it's kind of off of their desks now, and now we're waiting for findings, and now while we're waiting for findings, we're going to go ahead and ramp up into the other one.
So this is specifically coming, I just have a kind of a point of a clarification. This is coming to the board because of the financial ticket attached to it. Some of these other audits are already in place, correct?
The TEA one is, there's no cost to that, that's just part of their cyclical review that they do for all, for all school districts.
And this is coming to the board because the board asked to really make sure that we took a good deep dive into special services.
And you answered a little bit about the timeline, so it sounds like we'll kind of be getting staggered information from them. So if some of the recommendations are in terms of staffing or personnel in nature, that's going to come earlier to hopefully influence or not influence our budget for next year? Okay. And then other just non-staffing personnel issues administrative will come probably later in the spring?
Yes, and I would imagine from my experience in previous audits, that they'll give us the feedback, but then a little lump into one large report at the end. But I don't, I haven't worked with TASB before, so I don't know if they would do those in two smaller reports or what that would look like.
Okay. And I guess, can you just give me a, a high-level, what are we hoping to come, get out of this?
Well, for me...
And I wish, you know, I know other board members who weren't able to be present tonight kind of really fought for this, and so I personally would just like a little bit of information, what we want from a board coming out of this, so that we can hopefully let them know that before they start the process, so that our expectations can be met fully as well.
Sure, and I'll let board members answer that piece about what the board wanted, but I'll tell you from my perspective, we can't do better till we know better, and I like to have an open book, and when we, I mean, I can inspect all day long what we do, but I'm probably going to be missing about ten things because I'm too close to it. So I'm, 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 I mean, this is great for me because it just gives us a, a space to go exactly where we need to focus our efforts, so we're not spinning our wheels, and we're doing what's best for kids.
Stephanie, if I may, I think one of the biggest issues or concerns has been that we stay in compliance. So I know a deep dive, making sure that we're in compliance and that our, if we're, if there are gaps within our staff on training, that we fill in those, those gaps. Those are the different scenarios that could potentially put us in a bad situation in the future. So I'm looking forward to a deep dive, and I know that's a lot of work for you, but I think we can only be better for it.
I agree. I mean, I think it's always a great thing to kind of peel back the curtain and give the public even a little bit more information, and obviously give us as a board, like a high-level overview. I do think for some community members, this feels like, whoa. I do think for some community members, this feels like, whoa, this is coming out of the blue, you know, we're privy to a lot more sensitive information, and a lot of these issues sometimes is very sensitive information, that is not just public knowledge to everybody, and so, just in full transparency, like being good stewards, I do think, from what I've heard from the board in our previous conversations, this is an area that we can absolutely grow in, in our district, and, you know, you're relatively new here as well, this is an area that's affecting all of our campuses at different levels, and I think staffing is probably going to be a huge recommendation, because I think there's just either not enough staffing, or we don't even fully know, you know, what's going on, but I think there's a lot of different languages being used on this issue, and we're not really, we're not speaking the same language, we're not speaking the same culture, and so, I think a big goal, at least from my understanding from the board, is that we, like you said, we just wanted to figure out what is really going on, like, this feels like very messy right now in our district, and we don't want it to feel that way, we want to be in compliance, we want to have better systems, you know, that was a big goal that Dr. Morris Coons wanted, even for our district, and this is a big area, I think, that needs some systems in place.
Yeah, and I think, you know, well, I don't think, I know we have a lot of great stuff going on here, and I, and the more I'm on campuses, the more excited I am about what we're doing for our kids, but I will say, you know, I'd rather be proactive than reactive, and if, if I've got a blind spot, I need to know about it, if our department or the, you know, the district, we, we need somebody else to say, oh, you forgot about this, because sometimes we do focus our efforts on one thing, you know, we get so tied up in one part of it, we have such a broad scope of things that we do for our students, and special education is very complicated, and so sometimes we get stuck in those day-to-day things, and forget the bigger picture, and being in compliance, and not having those blind spots.
Can you speak a little bit to, I know the Special Education Committee is a new committee as well, and there might be a little bit miscommunication, and, you know, why are they here, if now we're going to bring in an audit so soon, you know, and how that relationship is going to look, kind of, moving forward?
So you're asking about our Special Education Parent Leadership Committee?
Correct.
And how the, the audit impacts that? Or what it, what the perception might be?
Yes.
It's two totally different things, and really, not all districts have a Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, or Parent Leadership Committee, or whatever they're choosing to call it, and that was something that, when I got here, had already been recommended by the previous director, and of course, we want to, we want to do that for our families, it's great for building relationships, it's great for getting the community members to understand what diverse student groups we have, and so it really is intended to be a very positive thing, we've been talking a lot about with that group, like, you're, you are ambassadors for our special education students and families, and we want them to have support systems in place, so that's not going to be changed at all, but I'm happy to, at our next meeting, talk about what's coming up, if we, if we have this approved, that it's not a, it's not a negative thing in my mind, it's a positive thing, like, we just want to be doing everything the best we can, and so, I'm sure parents want that for their students, too.
Sure.
Yeah, and I think the audit talks a lot about, like, compliance, administrative procedures, and the Parent Engagement Group is a lot about engagement, you know, it's about building those relationships, telling the stories, hearing the stories, and hearing different experiences, kind of that firsthand experience that I think we also need to know, because sometimes an audit may say, check, it looks fine on paper, but the, the experience and the story may be something different, and so we have to match both.
And I think part of the audit, I could be wrong, I'll double check with Ms. Carter, but they do a parent stakeholder meeting, and they'll ask parents how they feel about the services that they're getting, so that gives us that, not just teachers, and sometimes they'll even interview paraprofessionals, they interview campus administrators, so they're doing, you know, a broad sweep of all the people to, to see what is the perception out there, and, and where, where do we need to kind of support things, and oftentimes, it's the parents that don't feel like they're in the loop, and so we wanted, we wanted to try to get ahead of that, and so, we're hopeful that we're going to be able to do that with that leadership committee.
Yeah. I also think it's important, you know, we've had audits in the past for different departments, and not always put it into action, which is again, why I have, you know, high expectations, that I think we get clear on what we're really looking for in this, you know, is, I know, I can just speak for myself, like, I would specifically be looking for, do we need to add personnel, you know, to this department, are there budgetary concerns that are going to be affected, do we need to update some of our policies from a board perspective, you know, that are affecting things, obviously, are we in compliance, all those things, but I think as a board, we need to decide that, so that when these results do come, they don't just get swept under the table, that we can actually put them into practice, and so I don't know if that needs to even be like a summer workshop, to kind of put into our calendar, you know, for the future, to look forward to that, that this is something that will hopefully be changed or implemented, even as early as next school year, if we're doing that.
And that's something that I'm used to doing as well, so I, you were not here when I first came on board, but I did a little board workshop presentation in March, and the goals that we pulled forward were actually taken from these other audits that I found in a desk drawer, and so, I, you know, just pulling in information that other people had already pointed out as areas of focus for us, and so putting that into action. I'm a data-driven person, and so, that would absolutely be something, if these, you know, good recommendations, we want to make sure we carry those recommendations out.
And my last question, to my understanding, kind of how I understood, you chose TASB because they were the most thorough, or they offered the most in their audit, or?
Thorough, for one, and then they're cost-effective, they're pretty comparable to the other audit, but we didn't get as much with that audit, and so, those were two things, and that we hadn't used them before, so we certainly don't want to use an auditor that we've already used once, and we want to, you know, is there a different lens that you need to be?
Okay.
Thank you. Barbara?
So, just in light of some of this discussion about our expectation for audits, I just want to take a minute and read this, and remind everybody, so our board operating procedures, we usually talk about it just once a year, when we go over and adopt it, but our last big overhaul, we adopted a whole section on internal audits, and part of what we said was that we believe that all internal audits must begin and end with the board, internal audits are essential to the board's governance and management oversight functions, as well as its fiduciary duties. Internal audits demonstrate to the community that the board is fulfilling its management oversight functions by enlisting an independent and objective assessment of the district's operations and programs, and identifying opportunities for improvement. Internal audits help the board identify and effectively manage risk, and tracking the implementation of an internal auditor's recommendations increases accountability. So that's kind of what we said, as a board, was important to us. We talk, I mean, there's been a tendency in the distant past, sometimes to, to call things maybe program reviews, and they may be, you know, administration does them, to help improve processes, but we kind of talked about wanting to get away from that, and being clear if something is a, is an audit versus a, you know, not calling it a program review, and so, that these things, they do start with us, so this is why it's coming to us, I mean, we, we requested that y'all bring us a proposal, so we appreciate you doing that, yeah, particularly on the heels of the TEA audit, I know it's been a tremendous amount of work for y'all, so we appreciate it.
I want to give a shout-out to my colleague, Janine Eddy, who is phenomenal with getting things like that, she did a lot of the legwork, I'm not going to take credit for it, so she did a great job.
So that's why it's starting with us, that we approve that to go forward, and then it will end with, yeah, report to the board, and, yeah, and then y'all's, I mean, y'all's feedback on what recommendations are made, what recommendations are y'all recommending be implemented, and then if something's not going to be implemented, that we talk about why, so, but yeah, we tried to be really intentional as a board about what an internal audit is, and, and how that helps us in our, in our oversight function, so.
Thank you, thanks for bringing this to us. Ron?
Yeah, thank you, actually, Barbara, thank you for bringing that up, also, I, I would like to have a, maybe, a discussion, maybe not this evening, but at some point, maybe we have a little bit more of a robust discussion about the frequency of audits, for that matter, you know, back to Barbara's remarks about program reviews, I'd like to know, a little bit, like, you know, when those are scheduled, who executes those, and then, more importantly, especially as it relates to this special ed audit, I'm also trying to figure out, you know, when might be an appropriate time to revisit that, is it, you know, would it be appropriate to look at it every two years, three years, I'm not, I'm not real sure, so, you know, and maybe we can do a program review in the interim, so, I would like to have a, probably a broader discussion on all of the program areas, so that we have a calendar of when we can expect to see those.
Did you have another question?
I just want to second back, because I do think this is reactionary, you know, I know you mentioned, you know, that we don't want to be reactionary, but I feel like most of our audits are reactionary, and it, some of it's probably just the nature of policy, and, you know, you don't, you're not going to do something until you're sort of pushed to have to do something, but I, I do think to get to a point as a district where we can make some of these more routine, you know, in a systematized way, either if that's annual program reviews, I mean, that's a discussion, I think, for us at a future date, I don't know what a timeframe looks like that's appropriate or not appropriate, but I do think, and there is a difference, obviously, between a program review and an audit, this is specifically an audit, and I, I think it's going to give us some wonderful information, and I do appreciate all of y'all's work, but what does it look like now, you know, do we do this again in five years, do we do it in ten years, two years, you know, what does that even look like, or is it just program reviews, until, you know, we really need another kind of audit, you know, that's something, I think, to have a little bit of foresight, even just in terms of budgeting for the future as well, you know, how many audits are we doing in every single department, you know? It seems like whenever there's a problem in our district, we do an audit of that department as some sort of way to kind of, I don't know, show some transparency, or some goodwill to the community, and also for our own sake, but I feel like we, as a board, need to talk about maybe some better systems in place for kind of how we're even doing reviews and audits and things in the future.
Barbara?
I was just going to say, I mean, you said it's reactionary, I, I would say, I'd say it feels reactionary, I would say, I would call it long overdue, it's something we've talked about for a long time, and needed for a long time, but it was partly a, you know, having the, having you on board, having personnel in place to be able to do that, so, I think it's something we've talked about for a long, long time, so, it's so wonderful to see it finally coming to fruition, and I think it feels reactionary, because it's, you know, the timing of it, but it's, it's something we've wanted to do for a long time, so, thank you again for bringing it to us.
Sure.
Well, that's a good point, we've had discussions for at least a couple of years, and speaking of people in place, we do know that that's one of the strengths of Dr. Morris Coons, is figuring out, you know, what is that cadence of different program reviews, and the systems in place that make it possible to implement the findings of the audits, and... Ron, did you have another question?
I'd like to make a motion, I move to approve the special education program review to be conducted by the Texas Association of School Boards.
Okay, we have a motion from Ron. Yeah. Is there a second? A second from Marissa, and discussion?
Could we, yes, have some discussion, could I maybe suggest a friendly amendment, that we approve the special ed audit? Again, it's that, that wording, program review versus audit, and just us being intentional and clear about it, that, audit is a, is a statutory concept that the board does have a role in, so I, I would suggest that as a friendly amendment.
Or you could withdraw your motion and redo it as well?
Okay, so, Matt, so how do we, what's the Roberts Rules of Orders, do I need to withdraw my motion?
We, it sounds like you, you just did.
Okay, I withdraw my motion, and I move to approve the special education program review, or no, okay, I move to approve the special ed, special education program audit to be conducted by the Texas Association of School Boards.
We have a motion from Ron, and a second from Marissa, any other discussion? Okay, thank you, and all those in favor? Five oh, so we now have our charge for an audit. Okay, that is the conclusion of our action items. The board will now convene in a closed meeting to discuss the following items posted on our agenda this evening, as allowed by Texas Government Code, sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, 551.076, 551.082, 551.0821, 551.089, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting, any action the board wishes to take is a result of discussions, and closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in the open meeting, it is now eight oh seven. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for joining us.
Okay, the board ended its closed meeting at 9:05. We are back in open session and we have one action item before us, consideration and potential approval to hire construction project manager. Is there any discussion?
Madam President, I move that Dripping Springs Independent School District approved the hiring of James Conkle for our construction project manager.
Okay, and then Barbara, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? 5-0, another 5-0 vote. We are so happy to have you with us and for Clint to have help and I think we'll keep you very busy as soon as you get here.
Welcome to Dripping Springs, James. We'll see you Monday.
Well, we have no other business, so everyone have a wonderful Christmas and holiday break and I guess we'll see each other again at XG in January. So it is 9:10 and we are adjourned.